Can I entertain the motion to come out of closed session?
What's up, man?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Start the vote, Mr. Early. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Bryant.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And I vote yes. I'm going to ask each board member to certify a certification resolution whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed session this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote. And on a motion to close the meeting in accordance with Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section two point two dash thirty seven eleven D and we went under A one and A six of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to each that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And all such business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies. I'll ask you each member to certify, so you, Mr. Early.
I so certify.
Mr. Collins.
I so certify.
Mr. Bryant.
I so certify.
Mr. Horton.
I so certify.
Mr. Moore.
I so certify.
And I so certify. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Bryant, give me just an invitation and pledge, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for another opportunity to be together to help make decisions for this county. We just ask that you bless every citizen in this county and just help us to do your will in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Laid allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and of Israel, where liberty and justice are all.
Okay, I want to welcome you all to the Carroll County Board of Supervisors meeting. Our local governor, Bobby, convenes monthly to address community matters that are under the purview of the board. We uphold civility as a cornerstone of our proceedings and expect all attendees to conduct themselves accordingly. The board is committed to providing multiple opportunities for public engagement, including scheduled public comment and additional public hearings on specific agendas. We encourage active participation from our residents with the exception of work sessions and certain special call meetings. Public comment is scheduled for all our regular meetings. In addition to the meetings, Board of Supervisors representatives, we are already available for communication by email or phone outside of formal session. Please be advised that outburst or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We aim to maintain a respectful and productive environment for all attendees so that the public's business may be conducted in an orderly and reasonable manner. Thank you for your cooperation and involvement in shaping the future of our community. And with that, I want to start with the retirement recognition for Mr. Cook. Is Mr. Cook here? Okay, Mr. Cook did not come. All right. So next, we have a presentation of the Commissioner of Revenue who's going to come say some things to us and it'll be Wampler Eames. So, Mr. Marion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. Thank you all for the invitation to speak tonight. I'm just going to give a quick overview of why we have to do a reassessment. And I'm going to read straight through the Code of Virginia, Code Section fifty eight point one dash thirty two fifty two, which entitles title in counties. There shall be a general reassessment of real estate every four years, or if determined by majority vote of our county's Board of Supervisors every three years. Any county that has a total population of fifty thousand or less may elect by majority vote of its Board of Supervisors to conduct its general reassessment at either five-year or six-year intervals. In addition, Augusta County and Bedford County may elect by majority vote of their respective Board of Supervisors to conduct their general reassessments at either five- or six-year intervals. Section fifty eight point one dash thirty two fifty nine says failure of county to comply with law on general reassessment of real estate. If any county or city fails to comply with the provisions of this article requiring a general reassessment of real estate periodically in such county by omitting such general reassessment in the year required, or by failing to comply with the provisions of fifty eight point one dash thirty two oh one require an assessment at one hundred percent fair market value. The Department on Receiving Proof of Such Delinquency shall notify the comptroller, whereupon the comptroller shall withhold from such county the payment of its share of net profits for the operations from the ABC control system until such time as the provisions have been complied with in such county. Results of the Tax Department Official Assessment Sales Ratio Study showing that each county or city to have a sales assessment ratio between seventy percent and one hundred and thirty percent for the year, a general reassessment or annual assessment is effective. So that kind of just tells us why we have to have our general reassessment, if not, we lose funds that will affect our schools, EMS, Police Department, Fire Department. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Marion. And you're next, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gary Eames, I'm with Wampler Eames Appraisal Group. I have Mike Colavecchio with me, he was our lead appraiser on this project. And just wanted to thank the board for allowing us to come and talk to you a little bit more about the reassessment. Thanks to Wade for doing the legal reading of it. First of all, we are a Virginia-owned mass appraisal company, right here in Virginia. We, by the end of this year, Wampler Eames will have completed one hundred and sixty-seven reassessments for fifty-six different localities throughout Virginia and North Carolina totaling over two million properties there. We're knocking on the door right at three million. As Wade said, state law requires that counties do a reassessment every four years unless your population is less than fifty thousand. While four years is required, you can do an annual assessment or buy annual assessment. The State Department of Taxation always, we're under scrutiny by the state. They watch these ratios to make sure that they do not fall lower than seventy percent. And this is where I like to say, this is the first time I think I've laid eyes on you folks and thank you for letting me, again, let me come and speak to this. This reassessment is not because the board wants to have a reassessment. And it's definitely not because the Commissioner of Revenue wants to have a reassessment. It's state law. The state requires that you folks do this, and you're not the only one. Reassessments are going on all over the state of Virginia and North Carolina right now. So we have to be, our goal is if market, if the property values are here and market value is here, the state says you can't stop somewhere in between. You have to be at one hundred percent market value, so that's our goal. And again, how the state looks at that, they look at what the ratio is. So for an example, if you have a home assessed at eighty thousand dollars and it sells for one hundred thousand, then your ratio is at eighty percent. It's just simple math, it's assessed value divided by the sale price. Carroll County, right now, you're at fifty-nine percent. This just came out from the state, so your ratio before, not counting this reassessment, but as we are right today, you're at fifty-nine percent. So that means your public utilities are going to be paying you fifty-nine percent of the market value of their properties. Telephone companies, power companies, water companies, cell towers, any public utility. It's based on that ratio right there. So the tax burden, if the big corporations aren't paying their fair share, then the burden goes right back to the homeowners and property owners here within Carroll County, so that's where you are right now. The first step when we do a reassessment process is we come in and look at sales within your county. We didn't bring any sales from any other county in Virginia or North Carolina. We looked at sales right here within your county. We looked at residential sales, land sales, farmland sales, vacant land. So they're based on properties that have transferred right here within the county. Each property, if we can inspect it, there, a field inspector would verify the information at the door with the property owner and go over basically the property information that's on the property record card and things are updated. We add decks, outbuildings, take away, we've had to take away some structures lately because of the helene. So, and so we've taken away structures. Also part of the reassessment process, the county's divided up into smaller areas called neighborhoods, just for your market comparison. So if you're in a named subdivision, we start comparing sales right within your area. If you're in freeze, we compare sales within freeze and then we sort of move out from there. Throughout this process, again, we're looking at land values, yearly appreciation trends, and the data collect is collected and then entered into the appraisal software system. We also use GIS while we're out in the field. A lot of our field technicians have the GIS right on their phone. With this, we can look at topography, woodland versus openland versus woodland. We can look at waterfront areas. We can locate other structures on the property. So we try to utilize all the tools that we can, that we can have to do these assessments. Of course, our goal is to do accurate appraisals and be equitable on these appraisals. If we have two houses that are in the same neighborhood, they're identical, then they need to be assessed identical. We also, again, it all boils back to that, goes back to the ratio study that the state looks at after we're finished with the reassessment. Just pulled some examples out. These are sales right here within the county. This is one that, this home on sixty-eight acres sold for four hundred and fifty thousand. Its current assessment is on the books at two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. This is a home that sold for two hundred and twenty-nine thousand on two point three acre tract. It's on the books at a hundred and eight thousand right now, so you can see that one doubled in value since the last assessment. There's a condo that sold for two hundred and nine thousand, its current assessment is one sixteen. Here's a new home that we didn't have a current assessment on because it was just built, but it's an eight hundred square foot house on two hundred, two point three three acres of land, and it sold for three hundred dollars a square foot. And it was just yesterday, I promised that we were talking a hundred dollars a square foot for homes, but now we're up to three hundred. Here's another home here in Carroll County that sold for two hundred and fifty-seven thousand on a point six acre lot, and it's on the books right now at one hundred and eight thousand. So that's what we were up against. Here's another one, one eighty-five, current assessment's one hundred thousand. I did a little digging, other companies are working here in the state, and these are some recent reassessments. Floyd County notices just went out, they had a fifty-two percent increase. We did Franklin County, they were effective twenty twenty-four, they had a forty-six percent increase. And these are averages, residential was up a lot higher than that. Warren County is up sixty-five percent over four years, Washington County sixty-five percent over four years, City of Bristol was fifty-five percent. Allegheny County fifty-five percent. Clark County forty-seven, Dinwiddie County forty-seven, Augusta County, that was effective last year, it was fifty-five. And then Carroll, you're sitting here at forty-nine percent. I'd like to point out too that we're the same company, we've done your county four times now. In two thousand and twelve, the values, we actually, they dropped, the assessments actually went down in value. In two thousand and seventeen, they were up about two percent. In two thousand and twenty-one, we were up seven point five percent. So we don't create these numbers, we're following the market right here within your county. And so you can see from a value drop to up forty-nine percent over since two thousand and twelve. You know, we're following the market, the sales right here within the county. Now that the assessments are complete, we are in the middle of the hearings right now, so we're receiving appeals through email and through write-ins. So some folks are dropping them off at the Commissioner's office and they're getting those to us. We're calling folks, going over their property record cards with them. We're out visiting properties again if we need to. I was out looking at a property today. So we're, you know, we're letting the process happen, we're listening to the appeals, we're looking at these properties again. If we need to, we'll go out and do a second visit on them. If, once we finish with these hearings, it'll probably take us another four weeks to get through them. If property owners are still not happy, they can appeal again to the local Board of Equalization, which those folks will be citizens from your county. And so there is a second appeal. After that, if they're still not happy after the Board of Equalization, then they can basically petition the court to do, to look at it. Pretty much, also, again, fifty-eight point one, again, Code of Virginia thirty-three twenty-one. This is the second part of a reassessment. Just because property values are up forty-nine percent, some folks are up over a hundred percent. The county as a whole cannot capture more than one percent more revenues because of the reassessment. So basically, that puts it back on you folks to look at your tax rate. Just because values are up doesn't mean taxes are going up. You folks will have to look at the tax rate, you'll have to look at your budget to see what, how much funds you need to run the county next year. You can have a public hearing. If it goes up over one percent because of the reassessment, then you're required to have a public hearing when you set the tax rate. So I'd just like to point that out, it's not just an increase in property values that the tax rate will stay the same. That won't happen.
Are there any questions from the board?
Do you have contact information that we can reach out to y'all's group?
Yes, sir.
Did you see that we get that?
We, I'll be happy to get that to you, yes, sir.
Just by emails, fine.
Yeah, we can get that, I'll get it to Wade and get that to you, because I think he has.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Okay, next on the agenda is Citizens Time. Of course, public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the board either in person or in writing on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the board. To maintain a respectful and constructive environment, we do have some guidelines we need you to adhere to. Addressing the board, please direct all comments to the board as a whole, refrain from addressing individual board members or employees of the board or county. Orderly conduct, personal attacks, as well as use of vulgar or profane insults tends to lead to disorder and prevents the board from conducting the public's business and therefore not be tolerated. Scope of topics, comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the board and local government. Topics beyond the board's control or unrelated to local government are not appropriate for public comment. Question and answer public comment is not a question and answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment without permission from the chair. The supervisors do have time at the end of the meeting if you want to say, if they want to say anything. Unfortunately, the chairman may rule a speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the speaker may be removed from the podium. Each speaker can be allocated three minutes for their comments. Once the three minutes is up, especially due to the people that we have, that'll be your time for tonight, okay? All right, and we will start with Mr. Roy Hancock.
How you doing?
Doing good, you, sir?
Everything. I'm all right, I just, I'm not happy with the assessment. I'm not happy with wasting tax dollars on building a big swimming pool. I'm not happy with wasting our tax dollars building new EMS building. And I know that this assessment is going to drive our tax dollars up and we can't afford no more taxes as it is. Because I'm on a fixed income, social security, I'm sure a lot of people are. And I can't handle no more bills such as the tax increase that you're going to put on this assessment. So that's my complaints and worries about that, you know? There's too much economical worries now without us having to pay extra taxes for garbage, for wasteful spending. So why not cut taxes somewhere? Cut it instead of raising it on the people here, us. You know, because we got too much burden on us now. I mean, we're on a fixed income, we can't turn around and say, tell the Social Security Administration, say, hey, we're having to pay out more taxes, we want you to pay us more money, we got nobody to turn to to get more money. You understand what I'm saying? So we can't stand no more taxes. And that's it in a barrel, because you're going to cause a lot of us to have to turn around and sell our homes because we can't afford them. Because we pay too much on automobile insurance, home insurance, and then you got taxes coming in again on the real estate. And we can't, we can't afford to do that. It's just the way it is, that's my worries about this thing. Now, if I could turn around to the Social Security Administration and say, hey, y'all need to pay me more money because I'm going to have to pay more taxes. I can't do that. You know, you know I can't, and I ain't got nobody else to turn to to get more money. And that's all I've got to say, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Okay, next, I think it's Berkeley Davis.
I just want to say that you work all your life to pay for a place and all, you've paid taxes on it all your life. When you get to a certain age, you shouldn't have to pay it. All this young generation needs to work if they're getting handouts instead of the old people having to pay everything. When you get to a certain age, you shouldn't have to pay no more when you've paid all your life working trying to pay for what you have. And we don't need a big swimming pool to waste money on, taxpayers pay for it, and all this other stuff. So that's the way it is. We just barely make it to have a place to sleep and food on the table to eat when you get to a certain point. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, next. James Teely? No? Okay. Go to my next sheet. Adrian Childress?
Hello, I'm Adrian Childress, and my husband and I moved here almost twenty years ago to be near family and care for aging relatives and his families from this area. And I do understand the requirement for reassessing properties and that the tax rate per one thousand can be adjusted. But I did have some thoughts to share with you. Lived a lot of places in the southeast. One place I lived for many years, they had, and they still do, a way in which when you get your tax bill, if you pay it by date number one, you get a nice discount. You pay it by date number two, you get a little bit less discount. You pay it by date number three, it is exactly as it is. And if you pay it by date number four, you're assessed a penalty or fine. There are people in this county, obviously, who have a lot more means than some other people. And that would be, to me, a simple way for the county to increase its revenue collection. And because you would have that money early, you would have it before the due date. And again, it's an incentive and it makes people feel like their county cares about them. The second thing is, another place we lived, one town, we didn't live in Sullivan's Island, South Carolina. We lived in the adjacent town, Mount Pleasant. And the town of Sullivan's Island experienced in the nineteen nineties a large part of what's going on in a small way here in Carroll County. And that is people with a lot of money from a lot of other places who were able to sell their homes for huge amounts of money, moved to Sullivan's Island, which had a lot of small, two-bedroom houses, little frame houses that had been built there in the forties and the fifties. It had a real sense of community, a real sense of neighborhood. And those people living in most of those older houses were elderly. They, I wrote down what I was going to say so I didn't wander, but the majority of those homes there were small, old, on small lots, owned by people who lived there for years, who had made few or no improvements to those houses. And they were elderly and on fixed incomes, which is what we find a lot of in Carroll County. Carroll County has, I don't know what our proportion of elderly people is and what your threshold is for when you're elderly and when you're not elderly. But it seems to me, as I go about in Carroll County, that I see a lot of people my age and older.
Okay, next, James Teely? Hello? Okay. Go to my next sheet. Adrian Childress?
Hello, I'm Adrian Childress. And my husband and I moved here almost 20 years ago to be near family and care for aging relatives and his families from this area. And I do understand the requirement for reassessing properties and that the tax rate per 1,000 can be adjusted. But I did have some thoughts to share with you. Lived a lot of places in the southeast. One place I lived for many years, they had, and they still do, a way in which when you get your tax bill, if you pay it by date number one, you get a nice discount. You pay it by date number two, you get a little bit less discount. You pay it by date number three, it is exactly as it is. And if you pay it by date number four, you're assessed a penalty or fine. There are people in this county, obviously, who have a lot more means than some other people. And that would be, to me, a simple way for the county to increase its revenue collection. And because you would have that money early, you would have it before the due date. And again, it's an incentive and it makes people feel like their county cares about them. The second thing is, another place we lived, one town, we didn't live in Sullivan's Island, South Carolina. We lived in the adjacent town, Mount Pleasant. And the town of Sullivan's Island experienced in the 1990s a, a large part of what's going on in a small way here in Carroll County. And that is people with a lot of money from a lot of other places who were able to sell their homes for huge amounts of money, move to Sullivan's Island, which had a lot of small, two-bedroom houses, little frame houses that had been built there in the 40s and the 50s. It had a real sense of community, a real sense of neighborhood. And those people living in most of those older houses were elderly. They, the, the, I wrote down what I was going to say so I didn't wander, but the majority of those homes there were small, old, on small lots, owned by people who lived there for years, who had made few or no improvements to those houses. And they were elderly and on fixed incomes, which is what we find a lot of in Carroll County. Carroll County has, I don't know what our proportion of elderly people is and what your threshold is for when you're elderly and when you're not elderly. But it seems to me, as I go about in Carroll County, that I see a lot of people my age and older. The town there, Sullivan's Island, really valued its neighborhood, its friendliness, its community. And they were not really excited to see people come in, bulldoze those small houses and build mega mansions. And while they would get a lot more tax value perhaps for them, it was going to vastly alter the flavor of that place. And they cared about that place. It meant a lot to them. And so they took a sort of unusual route. I don't know how, every, every place has different laws and rules. But they decided to grandfather in older people. I'll, I'll talk faster. Older people. Who had been there for a long time and grandfathered them in for the duration of their life. And while it, we didn't mean that their taxes weren't enough some, they just weren't going to sell up for a lot of those people. Were going to have to sell their houses and have nowhere else to go. So I would encourage all of you to, to consider some creative ways to look at taxation in Carroll County. Carroll County is a beautiful place. It's rolling hillsides, pastureland, creeks, streams, clean air, clean water. It's a really, really lovely place. And so I ask that you, you're not bankrupt older residents who don't have anywhere else to go. And one other final thing to say, thank you on improving the county's website. I was looking at it in the last few days and it really is easy to use now and it's easy to see the agendas for the meetings and the minutes of the meetings. And it's a vast improvement over the other website. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next on, I have Kevin Carrier.
Good evening. I'm not going to be repetitive because some of the things I was going to say, all was said. We bought property here 20 years ago. Some of the things that the woman in front of me just said. Municipality where I lived for several years, they did have that percentage. Where if you paid early, you got 3%, 2%. What I wanted to say was, this is the first time that my property's been reassessed where the card wasn't left there, where I knew that they actually did a physical visit. I wish they were still here because my questions were more or less to the people who did the reassessment. You can look on a satellite and look and see square footage. My house went up 80%. There's been no additions to my house since 2018. So either they missed it, or I added a garage. Maybe they think it's additional living area. But I have a square footage area of just under 1,200 square feet. They're telling me my property's worth $485,000. Previous was $269,000. Values, it's really, it's, it's relative to who your buyer is. Some people may think that your views were $73,000, which we had a lot that sold for $73,000. The lot right next to it sold for, for $27,000. It's just if somebody wants that lot, it's relative to what they want. So you, I understand the reassessment, that it does need to be done. But it's not really done equally when it's all relative to whoever the buyer is because it's always in the eye of the buyer whether that property's worth it or not. I have another property next door to us. We're all on five acre tracts. His went up 86%. There's no way that house is worth $536,000. You're not going to get it. So it's, it's not equal. They did not go door to door. I have a Ring camera, so when I'm not there, I would have noticed somebody was there. So that was a false statement that he did not go door to door. And also, the development that we live in, it's a private road and it's, it's a dirt road that we have to maintain ourselves. There is no infrastructure within our development other than electricity. If I wanted to put a telephone line in, the telephone company's already said there are no new lines that are coming in here. So the only infrastructure we have is electric. So, you know, I, I think it was very overinflated. And again, not to repeat what everybody else said, but I do understand was there. I think the, the only issue that I have is your appeal date was Friday, but yet this meeting was today. And some of, most of these people here may have had additional questions that didn't appeal. That it would have been nice to have the appeal date extended beyond after this meeting because there's more ideas and, and questions, I'm sure, after this meeting other than Friday being your deadline, be able to appeal. That's all I have to say. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Glenn McMillan.
Look, fellas, I appreciate y'all's time. I've lived here in Carroll my whole life. I do asphalt work so I can pay to farm. I'm like a fifth-generation farmer. I don't want to see my grandpa, parents' place where I can't afford to keep it no more. I done asphalt work and drove a truck around here. For years and years, I've watched people from other places come in and buy the fancy gap mountain views that can afford to pay a fortune. I can't afford to pay a fortune. I work every day so I can farm now. My place went up probably 100%. It went up $80,000. And I have a small house to start with. We're not talking about the land that I have. I'm just talking about the house itself. Like, I can't afford it, fellas. I mean, y'all supposed to work for the people. I appreciate something being done. I don't got the answers. But like, I can't afford that much taxes either. Leave it to where the farmers can farm. I ain't got nothing else to say either.
I do have one question for you. Do you have your land, your farmland and land use?
No, I don't have, I don't, no, sir. I don't know, don't even really know how to do any of that since my grandpa passed away a couple of years ago.
That's something I, you need to speak to Wade about that. There's a program that we do for the farmers to, to keep, to keep you farming. Yeah, so if you'll, if you'll speak with him.
And I did, I did file the appeal on time, like, my, my.
Well, there's still, I mean, you can comment. I mean, they're still taking appeals and they're, they're going to do the appeals board, so it's not, it's not.
I turned it in to this gentleman right here.
Yeah, so it's, it's not that it's, the deadline was complete. I mean, they're going to have in six months, we have the, the board, the local citizens too, to, you know.
Just on, just on my house, it went up $80,000. And I mean, I got a small place to start with.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I, y'all can adjust the rate, do whatever. I ain't got the answers, but we need some help.
Okay. We thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Richard Bailey.
How you doing, gentlemen?
All right, you?
Uh, my name's Richard Bailey. I live over in Doug'sburg. I moved here about three years ago and retired from the military. I bought a house in 40 acres over in Doug'sburg and I paid $320,000 for it. Here we are, a few years later, three years later. And I just got my evaluation and it's at $500,000. Now, there's been some improvements on my place, I'll tell you right now. There was two deer steer, deer stands built and a chicken coop. So I'm not seeing where this evaluation's coming from. I can tell you right now, in our government, we have seen insanity the last four years. We have seen everything go crazy. We have seen people move from California. We have seen people move from New Jersey. We have seen people move from New York to our area. And they brought their money with them. And they overinflated our market right here in this county. I don't think there's a person in here that will deny that. Not one single person. So I do not believe this evaluation is fair. Not at all. And the comment was made about them going door to door, that's a lie. On my property, I have a gate on my driveway and not one person contacted me for entrance into my property. You know, I understand the issues that a lot of these people in this county have. This isn't a rich county. People just get by. And it's really unfair to the people of this county if we sit back and we take an artificially inflated market and we apply the taxes to the people of this county based upon that. I mean, I, I, I'm just at a loss for, for where we go from here. I really am. You know, and, and I understand that, that I'm new to this county. But you know what? I am a member of this county. And I've not seen much else improve in this county since I've lived here. So where's the money going? Right now, roads are pretty bad in a lot of places. You know, I asked the board supervisors, what are we doing? What's the plan with this money? What's the justification? We deserve an answer on that. But I do appreciate you guys being here and, and letting me speak to you today. Hope you guys have a good evening.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, next will be Tony Hall.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are you?
All right.
We're doing good. I sent you all an email week four last. I'm not going to review all those bullet points on that, but I do want to make a couple of things known in addition to that email. I hate they left. Anyway, the buildings, through two of the three storage buildings, were put on wrong deeds. I have two deeds on the property. My reassessment is not correct. That alone tells you it was done incorrectly. The second thing is, he did ask to enter my home. You can't ask as an ancestor to come into my house. You can't. State code. Can't do it. He did it. Those buildings have been assessed as permanent structures on a solid foundation. They are not. They are storage buildings sitting on cinder blocks that can easily have a tractor hooked to them and then be moved at any given point in time. They cannot be assessed as permanent structures. Another point I want to make to you all, really a question, but I don't expect an answer. I sent the email to you all on Thursday. On Friday morning, I received a phone call from the Commissioner, uh, Clerk of Circuit Court asking me to explain my appeal to you all and the Commissioner of Revenue. How did the Clerk of Circuit Court get involved? Why was the Circuit, Clerk of Circuit Court involved in my reassessment? Think about this, gentlemen, all of you. This reassessment has been wrong from the word go. The processes, the procedures, the outcomes have been wrong from the word go. And the people who are paying for it is me, you, and the rest of these folks behind me, along with the citizens of Carroll County. And you need to fix it because you work for us. And that's all I got for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Jim Dixon.
I want to thank you all for hearing everybody out. I'm here to say that the assessments is, can be real in era a lot of times. Somebody might have a house and they spend $200,000, $300,000 in remodeling it, fix it up real nice. When the house is around them, it's not fixed up, but they got the same value to them. I think our government has inflated a lot of stuff. We got taxes coming up now. They supposed to go up unless y'all leave the, the, go down on the tax rate. And y'all have that decision, right? You can.
We've not decided the tax rate yet, sir.
Okay, so, but y'all can influence it, I think, maybe?
Yeah, we, we adjust the tax rate, yes, sir.
So if you drop your tax rate, then, you know, it'd be easier to live with. But for some of the peoples, I've heard some of them going up 300%. We got a piece of property that tax value went on, up on hit $200,000. And the value's not there. I've been trying to get $400,000 out of 85 more year lease on it and have not had it offered yet, so. But now it's worth $980,000. And the same property was appraised seven, eight years ago. It was praised, well, the tax value was $750,000. The appraisal come in at something like between 400, 400,000 to 500,000 appraisal. It's off of something like $200,000. It's went up another $200,000 and it's double what the value of it would be. So I, I think, it's depending on what tax bracket you're in, the government can be getting something like 50% of your taxes or your income. So if you're fortunate enough to make a hundred thousand a year, you only, some people aren't going to get 50,000 because of the tax brackets and the cost it's going to be. And a lot of people cannot afford anything extra on the taxes. Or light bills, you know? We had the light bill, the AEP come out with a high rate on their light bill. Everybody opposed to it and they got hit reduced down. So here, we have the local area going up on the assessment to where a lot of people cannot afford it. And then we've got insurance companies. I got a bill for $11,000 for liability insurance only. And I don't even do nothing much, so. Considering all these other things that's going on, trying to get other people to come in this area and, you know, we might be a high-tax rate county anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, I, and forgive me if I pronounce this, Andrew and Robin, I believe.
Andrew. Okay. What's the last name? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm Andrew Frashay. I moved here from Colorado four years ago. When I bought the house I bought, it was on the market for over 26 weeks before we purchased it. The value that it was reassessed at is over $230,000 more than what I paid for. In four years, it doesn't go up that much. I think those gentlemen left because they didn't want to get caught in the lie. The, the word fair market value is a misnomer here. I want to know where, I want them to clarify to me, where do they come up with a fair market value on these properties? I'm very fortunate. I work from home. So I, I'm at home every day during the week. Nobody came to my house. And, and there's a lot of people here that are on fixed incomes that have far less income than I get. They, they can't afford these increases in the taxes. Now, it's just a tax assessment, right? You guys can only raise it like 1%, I think is what the law says. But it, it sets it up for you guys to raise the taxes year after year after year. These people can't afford it and Carroll County can't afford it. There's no industry here. What happened to Park Lane or whatever it was that was right next door, they're out. They went to Sparta because they're getting a better deal on their power and other things in Sparta. Starbucks, Silver and Galax because you guys wouldn't let it come into Carroll County, which is another way to bring income. I don't understand what your, what, what, what your, what your plan is here for Carroll County because town of Hillsville and the county itself, it's not, it's not progressing. It's not growing. It's deteriorating. And you guys are putting the tax burden on the people that live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Sinclair? Laura Sinclair?
I didn't write it, Sinclair.
Okay.
Was at one time the state facility over southwest of Virginia Training Center, which I worked for about 27 years. And the state chose to close that down. So what jobs do we have left? And, and I want to just reiterate, a lot of the things that I wanted to say have already been said. But you know, at one time, and I think this was a different board, but Remington Firearms wanted to come in here and build a plant over there on, what's the name, that park, parkland area?
Wildwood? You saying Wildwood?
Wildwood Park, yeah. I couldn't remember the name of it. But the supervisors at that time didn't want a firearms industry in the county. And I'm thinking, why, when every person in Carroll County owns at least 15 guns? You know, I own more than that myself, but I don't understand the reasoning behind some of these things. And this is not just Carroll County. I've seen this happen in other places that the people that are in power do not want a certain industry here. for whatever reason. And, um, I totally agree that, um, the tax assessments are unreasonable. Uh, and that, that is a lot because of what the gentleman said about people coming in here. We don't have that many millionaires in Carroll County. We have some, we might have a few billionaires, I don't know, I'm not one of them. But to assess all of their property based on what those people can come in with big money, and I'm going to say this, drug money is all over the place. They have money to buy what they want. They have money to burn. I've seen it in other counties. This is what's causing our tax rates to go up. And I just don't think that the citizens of Carroll County can absorb any more costs like this, especially the elderly, people on fixed incomes. I personally would like to see the county get in budget shape that nobody over 75 years old would ever have to pay property tax again. We paid it all of our life. By the time we, if I lived to be 85, I will have paid for my house twice. And that's not fair. Because, and, and there again, I don't think that we as citizens of Cana get the benefit from our tax money that maybe they get in some of the other areas like the town of Hillsville. And Cana is one of your largest districts, population-wise. Okay. Can I have an extra minute?
I'll give you just a little bit more, yes.
Okay. As for the swimming pool, now I found out this week that we have lost at least two teaching positions at St. Paul School. I don't know about the rest of the county, but it hurts me to see our budget that you cut the school board budget and we lose valuable teaching positions when a lot of these little kids have nowhere to go. They get their only hot meal. They get their only loving environment from the teachers at school. We have a lot of kids like that. I work in the school. I hate to see that. So instead, I suggest that instead of spending that money on that swimming pool, put that aside until we have more money than we can know what to do with and then build a swimming pool if you want it. Use that three and a half million dollars to lower our taxes, put some money back in the school board and hire our teachers back. Thank you very much.
Well, ma'am. Ms. Cross, I will comment on one thing. We have not cut the school board. We gave him additional money last year. We took it out of savings. So we didn't raise the taxes. We took out 1.6 million dollars out of our savings account to give to the schools last year. So we have not cut the schools.
And we've not seen this year's budget.
We've not seen this year's budget. So I just want to clarify that, okay? We, we have not cut them any money. Okay, next will be Marla Thompson.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thank you. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my parents who are 85 and 86 and have 12 acres in Fancy Gap. And of course, they're on a fixed income. They got their assessment and it is 246.33% increase. Now, there was a new addition. It's a tiny home. It's 445 square feet. It doesn't even have a bedroom. It has one interior wall. And they assessed that at $262,300. And if anyone wants to buy my tiny home for $262,000, I'll talk to you right away. My dad took an appeal down to the, uh, the office on President's Day. He didn't realize it was President's Day. So when he walked in, the office was closed, but he met the assessors. They were there having a meeting, some, some of them, I guess. And they took his, uh, appeal. And he, he showed them this and explained it and, and said, um, this is way over assessed, not even close. They seemed shocked at it. And, and of course, this is hearsay. I'm, I'm telling you what my dad told me. They said, "It shouldn't be that high. What we recommended was between 40 and 50% across the board", is what he was told. They took his appeal. They called him and basically said, "We're not going to change it." My dad got quite upset. He was going to be here tonight, but he didn't think he could handle it. They told him on the phone that they did not include his house, the main house, at all. That the entire 262,300 is on the tiny house. Uh, I live there and I work from home. They never came. I never saw anyone. And their house is three, well, probably twice as big as mine. In '24, they assessed it at 55. In '23, they assessed it at 55. Yet they're assessing this tiny home at $262,300. There's just no logic to that whatsoever. And so that definitely needs to be reevaluated again. They told him on the phone that they were not going to change their mind. So I do want that looked into and we will take it all the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Okay, next, I have Steve Card. If I do pronounce someone's name wrong, you can correct me?
Okay.
Thanks for, uh, listening to us, guys. I'm also questioning the validity of the assessment, uh, amounts. I mean, I understand that we have assessments and this kind of thing, but I, I did an internet search. That's makes me a real estate expert now, but, Zillow reports a decrease of 0.6% in the last year for, uh, our area. Redfin reports a 9% over the last five years. Realty Track reports 8.7% over the last five years. Realtor.com gives a range of .3% to 9% over the last five years, but they're saying an average of 6.5% in Hillsville. So where does 50% come out on an average when these so-called, I don't know whether they're experts or not, I don't know, but they're talking at, at most, 8 or 9% increase? Uh, maybe some of us would be willing to accept that, given the, you know, the, the inflationary environment that we're in based on, you know, not only COVID, but what's been going on in the general economy in the last four years and so on and so forth. Uh, we see this in the automobile market, you know? We're seeing a, a, a real high prices and now all of a sudden you couldn't sell one if your life depended on it. So is that going to happen with all of our homes when we're assessed at these high values? I don't know the answer to that, but, but it does feel like we're being taxed on unrealized gains. Uh, you know, this is money that we didn't spend. This is a value that's just out in thin air. Uh, you know, is this a real number or not? I don't know, but I do question the, you know, just the assessment that everything in the whole state's going to be up 50% or more. That seems crazy. Now, these other people have stories just like mine, you know? So I won't, uh, I won't belabor the point. I think this swimming pool seems to be an out though. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next, I have Hillary Bochkin. Bochkin? Bochin? All right, Bochin.
Thanks again for letting me speak today. My name is Hillary Bochin and my family have been property owners in Fancy Gap since before Carroll was a county. I have a deep love for the community and its people. I currently work at the high school and I volunteer for two nonprofits in the county. Why am I telling you this? I feel it's irrelevant because I've been here long enough to see the lack of growth over time. And I refer back to a cartoon map from 1996. Some of you who may have been here at this time may remember this lovely cartoon. Look at all those businesses we have. I hold it correctly. See all those businesses that we had at one time in this county? Carroll County's made a business of local government and it's failing our community at a time we can least afford. The answer is not to punish the citizens and make property ownership unattainable, but to open its doors to progress and help new businesses become a part of the community. There's little growth and I've collected information from the Census Bureau to prove that. Um, the gentleman that was here and left talked about Floyd. Floyd County, their poverty rate is 11.1. Carroll County is 16. Children in poverty for Floyd, 2%. Carroll County, 19. Household income, uh, 61,000. Carroll County, 52,000. Per Kappa, 36,000 for Carol and, or I'm sorry, 36 for Floyd and 29 for, uh, Carol. 26.7% of Carroll County's population is over the age of 65. All right, let's see. I would love to see progress, but we have a few things to address, like one grocery store in town, Hickory Hills Shopping Center, the economic development, which we invest so heavily according to the, the budget that you guys have, school rankings and ratings. People with families don't necessarily want to come flocking here with their kids. They want to, you know, it's people that have money to buy our cheap rates. Then they get here and they're shell shocked at how little we have. The restaurants, the shopping. Uh, and all this information is from census.gov. Um, and also homes.com. There's 285 available places in Carroll County right now versus, let's see, Pulaski, 161, With, 177, Floyd, 21. Let's see. Well, honestly, the other things have been addressed. So I just want to say that I think it's very, we can do something a little better here, all together, I think. And I also don't think the Board of Supervisors as a whole should be commenting as much on Facebook. I have looked some people up on Facebook just based on people's responses to a post. My post posting community information and I was attacked. Some people, people have given me phone numbers to call them. This is a public issue, not a personal issue where I should be contacted personally. I posted publicly and I posted the truth publicly. And it should have been addressed like that. Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, next, I have, uh, Norma Stone. Norma Stone. Okay.
I mean, you know, I'm like the other people. I think that it's too much poverty down here. I've lived in Northern Virginia for 30 years. I come down here, I mean, people are struggling to eat. I mean, it's serious, it's, it's sad. I mean, I work in social service up north. Down here, kids go to bed hungry. And you're going to tax their property and stress their parents out? How are they going to keep the house? How are they going to keep the land? It's really, really sad. I mean, do y'all think about the people? I mean, I'm like other people. You need to bring some jobs here before you raise tax and all that. Like, yeah, it's easy to come here from Northern Virginia because I sold my house there. So I can come down here, you know, it's good. But the people who live here, like my mom, she's 84, she can't afford to keep staying here. So, anyway, that's what I have to say, but thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, I have a Dennis Stone.
Good evening, guys.
Hello.
I wouldn't want your job. But she said, "I lived here and had to leave for work. I was a general contractor. The gentleman that was here earlier that left, uh, I built houses for 45 years. I don't think his assessments is, is right with, you know, the program. Now, I retired from building and, and a farm. And as this one gentleman here says, it, it's making it hard for the farmers. I mean, I can sell the farm and quit, but, you know, are we going to eat? You know? I think maybe if you'd take time and, and look it over, and I'm sure y'all's taxes went up too. But if we could adjust this down to a, to a point where people could afford it and stay, I think that would be to everyone's, you know, interest. And I guess that's about all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the last one I have signed up is, uh, Dan Williams. How are you?
Doing pretty well, sir. Hope, hope you are too.
Doing good, thank you.
It's good to be here today. Happy to be able to address y'all and the community. What I'd like to say is, my family's been here since, pretty well, like the woman said before, before Carroll was a county. I guess it's probably about 1830 something. Anyway, back to the other side of it. Pretty well, we get taxed on every part of our life. All right, we're getting hammered with taxes, taxes left and right, and a bad economy. If y'all could, I would implore you to do us a solid on the tax rate when it comes up because these people need a break. Right now, you're poorer, getting poorer. They're having a hard time. And it would be the best thing as a human being to look after these people. These are our neighbors. We need to look after them. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's all I have signed up. We're running fairly good on time. Is anybody else that want to speak that didn't sign up? I'm going to, um, if you, if you'll come up and sign your name first for me, sir? And then I won't start your time, do you do, okay? I'll just let you do it. You tell me, I will. Eugenia? Eugenio?
You just announced your say.
You just started for me. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Gene Bergaletta. I live over off of Heben-
Sorry, go ahead.
I live over off of Heben Road. And, uh, I just wanted to know if, um, Appalachian Power or, I guess, is developing a solar farm, a huge solar farm over there. I know a lot of people are not aware of it because it's in my backyard. I look at it from every window in my house and everywhere on my property. So I don't know how that made my property go up 57%. I'm pretty sure anybody who would have looked at it before, right after the last assessment, looking at it today, would not be willing to pay the same price for it. That's just my personal thing. But I'm wondering if they looked into, uh, you know, this is obviously a, a multi-million dollar development and it's not even close to done. And they've been putting that much money in there on the, I'm guessing the assumption that they're going to make a ton of money to do this because nobody invests that kind of money without getting money back. So this is, uh, Energix, it's Appalachian Power, it's Vinoi Farms, who owns the property. Everybody's going to make money on that. Is there any way that this county can tap into that and say, "Hey, you guys are using our natural resources. You're taking up a big piece of land that was formerly farmland. You know, can we benefit from that somehow? And maybe lower the, you know, the citizens' tax rates?" I know that's a rhetorical question. I'm, I'm not expecting an answer now. It's just a suggestion, like, is that something that we can look into as a county? You know, Appalachian Power's doing work all over the county. that we can look into as a county? You know, Appalachian Power's doing work all over the county. They're putting up poles over by us. They put up a big transmission lines, things like that, where they, they're doing it, you know, their business. They're making money. As everybody here knows, they're making money. So is there any way we could tap into that, the county, and say, hey, you're in our, you're in our backyard, you're making money. We need to get some of that money from you guys. We need, we need more from you than, you know, you guys just using up our resources and charging our citizens, you know, pretty high rates. And that's all I got to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, did I have anybody else sign up, sir? You'll sign this paper for me? Just print your name, mister, and address, please. Thank you. Dave? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I'm Dave Wickham. I live in Woodlawn. I'm not a longtime resident. I've lived here five or six years. I bought our house for a hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars. We've done some improvements, and I understand that, but this latest assessment was four-hundred-and-forty-five. And the assessor did show up at our place. My wife talked to him, and they said they had mis-assigned, or mis-assessed an outbuilding in the previous assessment, and that our assessment should go down. It went up sixty-five percent without any changes to the property in the last four years. So the assessor that was here before said that he had done the previous assessment going back some years. Was he that far off four years ago that he has to jump at sixty-five percent to make it right this time? And he showed all those counties going up, it looked to me like an average of at least fifty percent. But if the value of all this property goes up fifty percent, that's a major increase in revenue, and I would rather see a fair assessment and a raise in the property tax if the county needs the money. Because everybody can understand that and somebody's accountable. But just to throw a nebulous assessment, we can't, we don't know what it's really based on. We don't know how to argue that assessment. And it just puts the property owners at a complete disadvantage. I mean, if you raise the taxes and we think you're wrong, they'll vote you out at some point. But the assessment is something that's completely out of our control, and we, we ask for an appeal, and they say no, and that's the end of it. You know, what, what did he base that sixty-five percent increase on in a, in a housing economy? It's only gone up ten percent in the last four years. So I, I really think that there is something wrong with the assessment process that in four years, everybody's is going up. I've heard a hundred-and-twenty percent, two-eighty-five, lowest I've heard is thirty-five percent, but that's all just anecdotal. But thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else? Alright. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am, please. You don't have to sign. Just write your name if you don't care someone, okay? That you spoke. Terry, correct? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Terry.
Alright, all this upsets me about going up so high on everything. But I wonder if all of y'all think about the old people that's in this community? They get these papers, and they look at them, and they're extremely high. They, like I said, they stand and they just flop their arms like a dying chicken. What am I going to do? What am I going to do? Then they're also, even you all, your parents, you're trying to take care of the town, but are you taking care of your people? They, uh, these older people have- ...their families. All the living. These are grandchildren. All them, they're all in the house taking care of this. Do you think you-
Anyone else? Okay, we want to move on to, um, next on the agenda is minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes A, B, and C together or separate?
Make that motion.
Have a second?
You're making the motion, Trace.
For all of them.
I'll second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early? Yes.
Sorry, my big deal, but there are some errors in the two-twenty-four meeting.
Okay.
Last page concerning the discussion about refurbishing the current EMS building.
What's, what's your?
Well, it sounds like I said that he wanted to chrome the building. I was using a euphemism saying, if it don't run, chrome it. And that didn't come out in the meeting or in the minutes. It sounded like Mr. Collins was, was trying to say to chrome the building, which is not what I said.
Okay. Just want to see if you want to modify those? Okay. So you want to approve A and B and just do C next, or with the modification? Okay. Alright. Can you motion, who was my second?
I'll second it.
And that's going to be on the modified minutes. Okay. I'll start the voting with you, Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent counter. You received, don't entertain a motion. Will we approve it?
I'll make that motion. We approve it.
Have a motion. I'll have a second?
Second.
Start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next on the agenda is invoices. I'll entertain a motion to approve invoices A and B together or separate?
I'll make the motion to approve A and B together.
Okay, to have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next is new business, fourth quarter appropriations that you received. Make, entertain a motion to approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next you're receiving your packet, B, which is non-discrimination policy. Does anyone have any questions on it?
I do.
Okay.
Where did that come from, Mr. Durbin, or Mr. Watson?
Uh, this non-discriminatory policy was sent to me from our, from the PDC. What it is, is as we're finishing out for one of our broadband grants, we have to have a adopted non-discriminating policy that includes this writing in it so that you, uh, cannot discriminate. Our ARC grant requires us to have an approved non-discriminatory policy, and if you don't discriminate, it's all the difference.
Well, not just any reason. There's a list of reasons. Has anybody checked the state non-discriminatory policy?
I think this tracks the Virginia Values Act. It was passed in twenty-twenty, so I think this does track Virginia law.
Well, yeah, it does pretty close. Orient, sexual orientation or gender identity, I don't think you need both of those in there. They're interchangeable. I would take one or the other out.
I think that, I, I think they do make a distinction.
No. Well, you're the lawyer. I just asked that you look at it to make sure it conforms with the current non-discrimination language of the state.
Yeah, if you look at two-point-two-thirty-nine-hundred.
I looked at it.
It does list sexual orientation separately from gender identity.
Well, then why does this say or?
Because they're different.
No, they're not.
Well, the, the way the code of Virginia describes it, sexual orientation, gender identity, military status, or disability in places of public accommodation. So they're, they're separate categories upon which discrimination is prohibited.
Is it urgent we approve this today?
No, we can table it. Table it.
I'll make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Okay.
The next regular meeting.
Have a motion to table to the next meeting, which would be April?
I'll second that.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next, item C, personal policy changes. You want to table this as well, or we? Personnel.
What this does, and I can't elaborate on it real well because it went through HR and we consulted Sam Anderson on this. What this does is aligns more with what the requirements are with firefighters and the gap hours. I mean, we have to compensate them for the gap hours. I'm not going to describe this very well. Steve, jump in and help me, but there is a federal overtime, and then there's a state overtime, and there are gap hours between the federal and state when you have to pay compensation time. And what this does is makes our personnel policy follow that for, uh-
So, yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll, so that's a pretty good description. There's, actually, Virginia sort of closed, there's a loophole in federal law when you, when you exceed the threshold of, of irregular over, irregular hours versus when for firefighters, time and a half has to kick in. Virginia has, uh, closed that loophole under Virginia law, and so this is, the intention is to just comply with, with the Virginia gap pay statute.
So what we were doing is, as we've changed the way that we're doing our scheduling for our firing EMS, we went through and reviewed these to double check how we have to pay this. Based on whether you are a firefighter EMT, or if you are just a firefighter, we went through all that process. And as we were going through this process, our current personnel policy does not, I think we were doing it right, but our policy doesn't say that the same way that we were doing it. So this cleans up as it goes along.
Yeah, I believe that you were calculating the, and paying the correct overtime. It was just the policy had a gap.
Yes, sir. I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel policy changes?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Early? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next, in, in your package, you received the Red Cross proclamation. Does anyone have any questions on it? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, have a motion by Mr. Moore to have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is item E, advertised republic hearing for recreational vehicle. I'm going to have Mr. Newman, if you'll come up and, uh, this has came from the Planning Commission.
We have a proposed recreational vehicle park that's been presented to the Planning Commission. As we were looking at the requirements, the definition of recreational vehicle just jumped out at us that it was very, very, very limited to self-propelled motorized, self-contained vehicle being a motor coach. Where this particular recreational vehicle park is being planned, I don't think that it would succeed with that definition. So we looked in the state code, forty-six-point-two-dash-fifteen-hundred, and that is what is listed in the handout I laid on your desk earlier, that we would change the definition of recreational vehicle in the subdivision ordinance to what's in the state code. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing. We didn't have anyone to speak at the public hearing. One of the developers was here, you know, to show his support. They unanimously passed a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors asking for you to hold a public hearing and consider this change also. And I have two of my Planning Commission members, Mr. Early and Mr. Up, here. I think Mr. Up, yeah, Mr. Up's still here. If you all have any questions of either of us.
We talked about our joint meeting, so I don't have any questions.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, so we entertain a motion to, you want to advertise the public hearing for next April? What is that date?
Seventh.
Seventh? Okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Well, public hearing on April seventh, to change the recreational vehicle. Motion by Mr. Early to have a second?
Second.
Okay, start the voting, uh, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, let's, uh- I don't think we have any available just-
Yeah, Ms. Clark.
Oh.
Special Service Board.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to reappoint her.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion to put Susan Clark back on the Social Services Board. And I second my Mr. Early. We'll start the voting with Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the revised budget counter that you received. I think, uh, Mr. Moore had emailed this to us. Does anyone have any questions on this?
I would like to make a change to that, adding a full board session for-
Okay.
Fourth. Let's do it after the public hearing for the tax rate.
What plan it says?
Six o'clock, Trace.
Yes, uh-huh. Yeah, twenty-fourth of March.
Twenty-fourth instead of it?
Six o'clock, huh?
To do it instead?
No.
Have it same night?
Yes, have it same night. Follow on the public hearing for the tax rate.
Okay, so I have, uh, want to modify the new budget counter, uh, the twenty-fourth of March to have a full board work session. Is that correct?
Follow on the public hearing for the tax rate.
Follow on the public hearing for the tax rate. Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, start the voting, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next on the agenda is board member comments. I will start with you, Mr. Horton.
Just want to thank all the citizens of the county coming out and giving us y'all's comments. We all are on, in the same boat, and so I want to tell you thank you. I wrote down a lot of notes tonight, and we'll take all y'all's comments to heart. Appreciate all the effort everybody's put into this new budget, and we're willing to look at this assessment a little bit more. I appreciate everything.
Okay, I'll go to you now, Mr. Collins.
Okay. First of all, like I say, I appreciate everybody who's come out and spoke. As a member of the Board of Supervisors, I had sticker shock just like everybody else did when, when the tax tickets reassessments came in. When you look at it and, and see what's happening, I do understand where it's at. I also understand that we can't have that kind of an increase. If it's, my understanding is correct, based on the budget that we have set, we're at a four-point-one-million-dollar shortfall. Am I correct? So, Mr. Chairman, I have a, uh, motion that I would like to make.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Whereas the county has allocated three-point-five million dollars for the construction of a new pool, three million dollars for the construction of a new EMS building, whereas three-hundred thousand dollars has already been spent to purchase one-point-eight acres of land intended to put the new EMS facility. Whereas it is best, in the best interest of the county to prioritize fiscal responsibility, allocate funds in a manner that best serves the immediate and long-term needs of the community. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors formally abandons the plans to construct both the pool and the EMS building. Be it further resolved that the one-point-eight-two acres of land purchased for the EMS building be sold with proceeds returning to the county's general fund. Be it further resolved that one million dollars be real, reallocated, resurface, renovate, bring the existing EMS facility up- bring the existing EMS facility up to proper operational standards, ensuring its long-term functionality and efficiency. Be it further resolved that the remaining five-point-five million dollars be returned to the county's general fund for future needs and responsible financial management. Hereby direct staff to transfer those funds necessarily, necessary to bal- balance the FY twenty-six budget. That's my motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Collins, will I have a second?
Second.
Good, have any discussion?
I, I have, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I, I do, uh, I do. On the, um, it, there's a lot to take in to try to decide for those. Uh, I get the motions to take away the pool and, and, and reallocate the money to the general fund, but in that motion, was it to use them funds to balance the budget or to...
He directed, I think it's, didn't you say he directed staff to use it?
Yes, yeah, directing staff, yeah, for, uh, responsible financial management.
Back to the general fund.
But not...
And the necessary balance for the twenty-six budget. That would put us over what we need for that budget without raising any taxes and put us well on our way to the next year not having that big gap as well. Plus, not only, since we're having discussion, not only have we set aside three million dollars to build that EMS facility, we're now looking at over six million dollars to build it. So, we're not only looking at three million dollars that we have set aside for it, we're looking at borrowing another three million plus to make it happen. And I believe in conversations that I've had with folks that we could take what we have and renovate it, spend some money on it, and we can continue to operate and serve our people well.
And, and I do have, may I ask the attorney or the county administrator, but...
Uh-huh, sure.
In that motion, is that allocating the funds right then to the, to the budget? Or is that just putting them in the general fund?
I'm gonna go with this, okay? And if I'm saying it wrong anyway...
That's, that's a lie.
The way that I understood the motion was that the two projects, uh, uh, one is already allocated...
Uh-huh.
And one has not been allocated.
Right.
That the, uh, funds that you're talking about now would be put into the general fund, I'm gonna call it savings account. And that, I think the po, now, correct me if I'm wrong, if, uh, the money would be used to balance the budget with going revenue neutral, is that correct? So, you would take out of the money that you transfer from there approximately six million, you would, uh, balance the budget with four-point-one.
I'm confused now.
Leaving approximately, um, that would put you about two million dollars, and I'm using rough numbers, two million dollars in the general fund. And it would do away those projects.
Can we ream in some of that?
Sure. Can I, can I?
Go ahead.
Say something first, because I think that maybe, I think everybody here is in favor of not raising taxes. I certainly am. And, you know, he stole a little bit of my thunder on what I was gonna say, but it's an interesting motion coming from the man, you know, on August the fifth, who made the motion to put three and a half million dollars into a swimming pool, seconded by Mr. Horton. So, that's interesting now that he's got second thoughts on the swimming pool. I never wanted a swimming pool, and I still don't want a swimming pool. I could perhaps go along with your motion if you took out the portion where you sell the land that we've already paid for, for a future EMS building. It's paid for, uh, the reason I think we need an EMS building is not to give them five-star hotel accommodations, but to improve the safety of the people in Hillsville. Every time I'm at the gas station at Cavalier Express, we got ambulances hauling, you know what, through the middle of town. And I, I'm telling you, one of these days, somebody's gonna get killed. Somebody's gonna get broadsided by an ambulance. The new location out there at fifty-two South and the bypass is an excellent location. So, I could perhaps go along with your motion, but without selling that piece of property. I too would like for the three and a half million to go back into the balance. I asked a question at, at our budget meeting from Justin about the unassigned fund balance, and we had a disagreement as to what is recommended, fifteen to twenty percent. You said twenty to twenty-five percent. Did you get an answer?
So, I did email Gordon, uh, I went back and looked at the meeting, um, and also emailed Gordon. He did say that we were, he recommended fifteen to twenty percent. Um, he did say it, at the rate we're at right now, he called it the sweet spot. So, that was where I picked up that mistake. Um, he did also go on to say that he would not change our policy, because our policy right now has twenty-one point seven percent as the unassigned fund balance. He said he would not recommend changing that, um, because it, that policy bases off of the GFOA recommendation, uh, of two months' worth of expenditures in reserves. Uh, having those is the same recommendation they make to New York City or Carroll County, any government, local government in the United States. So, it's kind of a broad brush and, and does need to be focused on each individual area. Um, you know, we're limited in the types of revenue we have. We're, we're not as diverse as some of those larger areas.
Okay, well, just a recommendation, not to change the twenty-one point seven for the financial policy, we could still take some money out of the unassigned fund balance. And if you took it down to twenty percent, it's two million dollars. So, there's two million dollars that could go to th- this year's budget. Three mil, three and a half from, uh, the swimming pool, three from EMS, if that's what we do. Um, so, we've got plenty of money without raising taxes.
Well, I think, I think, I think the motion was, would have been two for, that would leave a million to, I think, did you not reallocate a million to the...
Million.
Mm-mm, million, redo the building.
It'd be five point five.
Five point five.
Whatever, I don't think you ought to redo the building. It's a piece of crap, and it's been that way for a long time. Um, I, I wouldn't spend any money on it, and it's in a bad location. And, uh, you know, we need to do something different for our EMS eventually, whether it happens now or ten years from now. We should not sell that piece of property because it's a perfect location for an EMS building, and it's already paid for, and it only costs three hundred thousand dollars. Sounds like a lot, but not after this reassessment. So, I could perhaps go along with your motion if you took that stipulation out to sell that land.
Okay, Mr. Moore, you wanna...
Yes, um, and me and Mr. Bryant's worked a long time on this budget, you know? And if you do the things that y'all are saying you wanna do, you take the money out of the savings and you balance the budget or whatever, the finance director, the county administrator, and the two men on the board will tell you that next year you'll raise taxes thirteen cent. Am I wrong? Am I wrong? Am I wrong, Mr. Bryant?
I don't think so. Uh, we, we put the numbers to it every which way, you know, taking these monies out and, and, you know, if you don't set something now to, uh, accommodate for this, it's just gonna get us next year.
Just going, yeah, and we've worked over a five-year plan.
Well, and just to clear it up too, I didn't say we didn't have to raise taxes. I mean, that's not in motion.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, no, we, we're gonna drop the, the tax levy, you know?
But you're still gonna raise taxes, is that what you're talking?
Based on, based on, no, we've not voted on the tax.
I know, but you're talking like you're gonna raise taxes. The levy will go down, but taxes out, the money out of these people's pocket is gonna go up.
I mean, we're, we've not got that for you. We've not had a public hearing on a levy or nothing.
I know that. I've heard...
I'm surprised to say...
Let's just stick to this motion where we're at now.
Well, can I say one more thing? I was on the budget committee for the first three years I've been on this board. So, believe me, I know what's going on in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
You're assuming revenue neutral, right?
Exactly.
For taxes and all that? Well, like I said at our last budget meeting, there's gonna be some improvement to that. And I don't think you've taken that into account. You can't ever tell for sure what's gonna happen next year, but I know this year, these people do not need a taxing fee.
I agree. It increases me too.
My house went up sixty-three percent. The guy, I have a Ring camera, he spent two minutes at my house, May...
Right.
I'm up sixty-seven, I mean, I...
I'm just saying, I wanna work through this motion to make sure that we're making a good decision before we have our next budget work session.
Okay, you tell Mr. Collins, you, you two discussed it.
I, I, I agree with, with Jody. I mean, we, we don't need to sell the land till we figure out all this, I don't guess, you know? See what we're gonna do, but...
Do you wanna re-modify or do you want to keep? I've got a second.
I'm willing to take out the selling of the land.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think we paid too much for it.
I...
Three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars for one-point-eight acres.
Okay, so, let, let's, let's vote. I've got a motion, a second. Let's vote this, this one, and then you can redo your motion. If you, you're okay with redoing, take out this, this sale of the land?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Mr. Early?
Could you restate the motion as amended?
Uh, yeah, uh, well, do we need to...
Or do you wanna, I, I was just wanna vote on this motion and then do a new motion?
It hasn't been amended.
Do you wanna do an amended motion?
You gotta do an amended motion, right?
Mm-hmm.
You could either vote this one down and then replace it, or, um, you could, you could move to amend, Mr. Collins's motion to remove the reference to selling the EMS property. And if that is, if that is, um, a, a motion that you wanna make and it's seconded, then you would vote on that, which would amend the motion.
Okay.
Then you would vote on, you'd vote a second time to actually adopt the motion.
I'll amend my motion to take that part out.
Okay, so, amend the motion, taking out the sale of the, of the EMS property, so reallocate the...
Money back to the general...
Money back to the general fund that's left, okay.
And, and I just want clarification, so we vote on this right now.
Yes, sir.
Is that balancing the budget with savings?
No, he's, he's reallocating the money.
Just putting it back to the general fund, staff.
Directing the general fund, the direct staff to, because the budget's still not, y'all still working on that. But you have some extra funds there, right?
If we decide to use it.
If, if they needed to help balance.
Yeah.
Okay, whatever.
Putting the money back.
Right.
Okay.
That was my question.
He's not, he's not saying we're putting all five point five million.
No, just putting the money back.
Right, right.
Okay, okay. Thank you. But it's there to be used or wants, I mean, the budget's a little ways out, so...
I, I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. If, i- in his motion, he also has a million dollars, you know, to, to work on the other building, would it be maybe better to hold on to that at, at this moment? Or...
Well, that, that's, that's just...
I think it's pertinent that we fix that building.
Yeah, that's just, uh...
We can leave that in the CIP.
We can just...
And, and we would have to appropriate that through the CIP.
We have to vote on this.
That'd be fine, yeah. Because I'd like to look at that.
Yeah, well, that's, I'd say, you know, if we could check out the building and make, just make one-hundred percent certain it's worth the investment.
Yeah, yeah, we, we haven't even bid on it or anything. I mean, that's, that's a long ways out.
We can leave that hundred in CIP.
A million dollars in CIP.
In CIP. In the CIP, yeah. So, we're gonna, we're gonna amend that too, to put that million in the CIP, yeah.
Okay, so, we wanna, um, keep the EMS property, keep a million in the CIP to possibly resurface EMS building. And remaining five point five will go to, uh, for the pool and what we have for EMS, will go to general fund and then staff and the budget committee, I'll be using it as needed to help balance the budget.
Not a lot.
But not a lot of, right. Everybody understood now?
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion, uh, to have a motion for the amended...
Could he restate his motion since he made the motion?
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, let me get the one big enough I can read. Uh, whereas county's allocated three-point-five million for the construction of a new pool, three million for the construction of an EMS building. Um, we're taking out the, hold on. Whereas it's in the best interest of the county prioritize fiscal responsibility, allocate funds in a manner that best serves the immediate and long-term needs of the community. Therefore, be it resolved, board of supervisors formally abandons the plans to construct both the new pool and the new EMS building. Um, be it further resolved, uh, that the one million dollars be placed in CIP for the future, I don't know how that needs to read, of renovating the existing EMS facility, uh, bring it up to proper standards, ensuring its long-term functionality and efficiency. Uh, be it further resolved, the remaining money, I have five point five million if I'm off on that, be returned to the county's general fund for future needs. Responsible financial management hereby direct staff to transfer the funds necessary, uh, for the use in the budget, twenty, FY twenty-twenty-six.
Okay?
Permanently never gonna build an EMS building or, uh, a swimming pool. Is it just in the near term or what, what is the plan?
Well, I'm gonna make another statement with the rest of my remarks. Now, I think we ought to have a pool eventually.
Well, yeah, when we can afford luxuries instead of necessity, I agree with you. So, is it a permanent?
What, I, I...
It sounds permanent.
What does that?
It's not saying it's permanent, it's saying we're abandoning the plans and the money we have right now in those places.
We just need to vote on it, it don't have anything to do with... Have a motion, I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, start the vote, Mr. Moore?
Yeah.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few more statements. We've taken action for the budget shortfall. I, I still believe our county would benefit from the community swimming pool. Right now, I've raised two kids, uh, they're, they're now fifteen and seventeen years old. We've spent our time going to North Carolina pools and Randolph Park pools, and when we go there, we spend our money buying food, shopping in Walmart, buying other things when we're going out of town. I think it would be beneficial for us to eventually have a pool for our community, for the folks that can't travel those distances like, like I have. We must keep planning for the future. To grow our budget and fund essential services, we need to expand our income base by attracting new businesses, by applying for grants, for improving infrastructure, for increasing housing. We're already facing a serious shortage when it comes to housing. We've got a new business that's coming to exit nineteen that's gonna produce a hundred jobs. Hopefully, all our citizens will, will be able to get jobs there, but likely, some of those jobs are gonna come from out of town, and they're gonna need housing. One of the most effective ways to spur that growth is hiring a dedicated economic development director, uh, somebody that can go after business, look for business, look for opportunities, spend their time doing that. With the millions of dollars that we've been talking about tonight, that would be a drop in the bucket to put that person on staff that would be devoted to doing nothing but growing the economy in Carroll County so that we can increase our tax base and quit expecting our citizens to keep bringing more money to pay taxes, because the expenses are always gonna rise. And that would give our county administrator time to do more of the things that he has to do, and he's got his plate full. I apologize to the citizens as, as the board, and I wasn't on the board the last time there was a reassessment done, but we should've got ahead of this thing and, and done a better job of explaining, uh, how things would work and how the tax rate would be lowered. I, I've tried to do that with everybody who, who I've spoken to personally, and people have made con, comments, and it's been very effective at people understanding exactly what has happened. I'd just like to see us focus on getting new money for tax base rather than just expecting the, the costs is, the cost to keep rising and our citizens to continue coming up with more money. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Collins. Um, Mr. Horton, I did, yeah, Mr. Bryant, I didn't...
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that came out tonight. And, uh, like I said, we are working on this, so, uh, we'll, we'll do the best we can. And I just thank the staff and, uh, really appreciate all the work that, uh, Justin's put into this thing. He's, he's put numbers every which way he can to try to make it work out so we know what we're dealing with, and we just got to, uh, to make it work out the best we can, and that's all we got.
Okay, Mr. Early?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple more comments. Uh, you know, back to the discussion with Justin, I mentioned trying to have the town of Hillsville share in the cost of the reassessment. No towns in Virginia do that, so that's not possible. No towns in Virginia do that, so that's not possible. So I retract that idea from ever happening because it's not going to happen. I would like, and Mr. Collins already mentioned it, but the governor made an announcement on Friday about Oath House Ventures at Wildwood. They're going to start out with a hundred and four point eight million dollars building greenhouses out there. It will initially employ a hundred and eighteen people and perhaps as many as three hundred once they build all the greenhouses they're going to have. People have been frustrated like I with Wildwood not doing anything for twenty-plus years, but we're finally doing something out there. So my hat's off to Bracida and the folks that made that happen. I'm looking forward to having something going on there. Also, we received ten point two million dollars from Batty, Virginia Technology Initiative Grant Program, which we've been denied the past three years for various reasons, but we got ten point two million that's going to Zytel to bring broadband to the county. Citizens is already coming in from Floyd on the eastern and northern sides of the county. Zytel will be targeting this money towards the center part of the county, I think. And then we've got other grants coming up later in the year, I hope, that will finish out our broadband project. So that's one of the things I have to spend a lot of time on, trying to get broadband for everybody because it's just as important as electricity these days. The other thing is, you know, we did buy a piece of property out at the bypass at fifty-two South. It was a little over one acres. Three hundred thousand dollars, sounds like a lot of money for that. The reason it had to be bought was because we're buying, we're swapping land with VDOT next door that's going to give us over four acres of land, plus that. There's no commercial entrance on the VDOT property. So in order to access that property for an EMS building, you had to buy it. Okay? So fair market value worked in that regard. It's what a willing, able buyer will pay for it. And the only, only person that that land is valuable to is the people that own the VDOT property next door. So that's why it was three hundred thousand dollars and it'd be absolutely ridiculous to sell it and I appreciate you taking that out of your motion. I too want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I heard some really good ideas. Discounts for paying early, I think that's not a bad thing to look into if we can. I like the idea of maybe folks over seventy-five never having to rebuy their property again with property taxes because that's all we do is continue to rebuy our property. We worked hard for it. We don't need to have to buy it every year. And then I, I'd like to make a motion to extend the appeal date. You know, last, the twenty-eighth, I think, was the end of the appeal process. Is that possible to do, Wade? Well, these people deserve to be heard. When is that?
Wade, Wade, would you mind, so everybody can hear you on the, on the video?
That's okay.
We can't start the Board of Appeals till thirty days after the last reassessment hearing. So what we're doing, if we extend that, we extend everything on till we won't get the books done in time to do the first half billing. And I mean, if you all will extend that, of course, that's.
But if they miss it, they can come to the Board of Equilization.
Yes, they don't have to go through this first appeal. They can go through the Board of Equilization, then if they're not happy there, then they can go into the circuit court to appeal.
Well, the process of emailing or hand carrying it in to the assessor or mailing it to them, can they, if they brought it in this week, would they still look at it?
The reassessment team actually asked Friday evening if they could extend it through midnight tonight, and I granted that.
How about midnight the end of the week?
I can ask them if they're agreeable to that.
Because a lot of these people here have heard things they didn't know.
Right. And it's more on their staff too, so I'll have to ask them if they can have staff.
Okay, well, if you can extend it, I would, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, to the end of this week, like till Friday?
Yeah.
Okay.
And maybe put it on the website so the folks know.
Okay.
That's about all I have. Again, always thankful for the.
Send us an email if you do extend it so if we have constituents to contact us, we'll let them know.
Just want to thank everybody for their hard work. It's a very high-stress time for everybody in the county, and I can understand people on fixed income. I'm on a fixed income. And, you know, seeing my property go up sixty-three percent, I really did not appreciate that much. But I will say they did reach out to me and we talked about my properties and they were somewhat understanding. So I think that, I don't think they're just going to stick a hand up to you and not listen to you. I think it's worthwhile to contact the assessor, explain your case. They're knowledgeable and reasonable people, I think. And hopefully, you'll make some headway with them. Again, thanks to everybody that makes our job easier. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I did what the rest of the board had said. Thank the citizens for coming out, you know. You always love to see the citizens come to the board meeting, express their concerns and, and bring ideas to the table because, you know, we represent not only our districts but the whole county. And, you know, I've heard a lot of different things, you know, good ideas and, and things that we could possibly look at, you know, and, and, you know, sitting on a budget committee or on the board, you know, I see a lot of things too that, that I think a lot of the citizens, you know, possibly don't see as far as what their tax dollars is. And a lot of our, the tax dollars that is paid is, goes to the school systems, it goes to, you know, the county employees and, and we've got great employees and, you know, insurance goes up, AP power bill goes up. There's a lot of things that make this thing run and I appreciate Justin and Mike for all their work, you know. I mean, Justin sent an email yesterday to, to me and Bill on the budget, you know, just trying to, trying to come up with anything that we can to, to make it as, as good as we can as for the citizens because like Jody said, you know, all of us are being affected by it. I do want to appreciate, thank Jody and Mike and, and the broadband board for their work on, on getting the, the Zytel grant, you know, to, to the Carroll. It's always good to see more internet coming in. And I think Mike said what we're forty percent of the citizens now have opportunity with the, with hitting the citizens grant that we got. So, you know, we're about, maybe halfway there now, so that's exciting. It just seemed like it took a long time. And I know with the, the way the budget committees talk and the way the budget calendar is, we'll have a public hearing on the tax levy on March the twenty-fourth.
March twenty-fourth, yes.
Yep. And so at this time, I'll make a motion to advertise the levy at forty-nine cents on a hundred. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, we can go down from that, but we cannot go over that without another public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'll set that, or I'll make a motion, whatever the board chooses to set it at, forty-nine cents for the public hearing for a levy.
Okay, have a motion, Mr. Moore, have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Start the voting, Mr. Collins?
How about discussion?
I'm sorry.
Discussion. That's a twenty percent taxing increase, everybody. Now, where are, twenty percent. So add twenty percent to what you're paying today and that's what you're going to be paying at forty-nine. Now, it could go down, but.
Forty cents.
We've got five point five million in there to balance a four point one million dollar deficit. I don't think that that's an appropriate motion.
Okay. You're welcome to make one. That's the motion I put on the table.
Can I have a motion, have a second? Any more discussion?
Just a question, i- is there a limit to how much it can go down?
It can go all the way to ten cents.
Right.
Yeah.
You just have to start at some.
Put it out there to have a.
You have to have something set in order to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, and then the levy would be set based on the calendar.
Right.
April seventh.
It's the highest it can go, but not the lowest it can go.
Right, thank you.
Why don't we make it more in line with what we need?
I have a motion in a second.
We'll vote on it.
If it fails.
Mr. Collins?
Vote yes.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Early?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And with that being said, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I do want to thank everyone that came tonight. I do appreciate everyone was very respectful and appreciate you coming and being respectful to the board. You know, we're, we're in the same shoes. I mean, I've lived here my whole life. My parents, my parents are retired, they're on a fixed income. Their assessment went up sixty-some percent. We, we, my house I just bought in twenty twenty-three. It went up sixty, I think it's sixty-seven percent, and I've got an appraisal. I did appeal it, you know, and they, they appealed theirs, but, I mean, houses are selling. We, we can't control inflation. I wish we could. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, other than people need to quit moving here. I mean, you know, it is what it is. I mean, they're driving the prices up. There's a house that, on Honeycutt Dam, the reassessment, the new reassessment was a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Mr. Mary can tell you about this because the real estate agent called and asked about the reassessment. Won't know why it was so low. Well, he put it under contract the same day for three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. I mean, it, I don't have the answers. My, my kids live here. I have four children, two adopted children. They're all, you know, trying to make a living, have grandkids. Couple of them are lucky enough to have houses, but they're about priced out of this area. I mean, I don't know how they want to buy a house. I don't, I don't have the answers. I don't know how they're going to buy a house. I can't afford the interest rates. So, you know, my parents, my dad's a retired school teacher. He has a fixed income. It's like everybody else. I mean, he can't go out. I work, this job doesn't pay anything. I mean, if you want to know what we make, it's pennies on the dollars, five hundred dollars a month, basically. So, you know, work a full-time job, try to do this, work another job, just to try to make ends meet, to pay for the, the higher power bills, the higher homeowner's insurance, the higher car insurance. I mean, my car insurance is, is almost what my mortgage is now, not counting my power bills. I don't, I don't have the answers. You know, I wish we did. I wish houses weren't selling, but, you know, I've seen reassessments happen every four years and the state requires us to do it. And if we don't do it, we've got forty, probably forty-some million dollars of revenue that we've got to come up with or we even shut down all the schools or shut down the sheriff's office or EMS. I mean, it, it's not a good situation and I do appreciate the supervisors and the budget committee that's working hard on it and we're trying to get the tax rate down the lowest we can. And I have no problem with using some of their money from savings and, to a point, I mean, you don't want to use it all and get to the point they were a few years ago where they only had seven million dollars and you have something happen in the county or half people don't pay taxes and then you got to shut the county down because you don't have enough money to operate. But I have no problem with using some, but, you know, it's just like anything else.